Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, February 18th, 2021. We are meeting virtually via Zoom. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Baker's order superseding certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 dated March 12th, 2020 at 8:40 PM. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Patty Agia. I do not think she's recording an audio version. Is that correct, Patty?
Correct, I'm not.
Not doing an audio, but Forver Government TV, I believe it's Alex Mello, is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recorded thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members Jim Corkins, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, Vice Chairman, and alternate members Joseph Pereira and Ricky Sahady. Two of our permanent members, Dan Dupere and John Frank, are unable to attend this evening. Patty, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A as amended?
Yes.
I declare the February 18th, 2021 scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the Ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a City Ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1 requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you were here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of the meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the Forver Zoning Ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that the new recodified edition approved by the Planning Board and City Council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, now has the red grapefruit cover. That is the official copy. Are there any questions before we begin? Okay, so this evening we have a couple of interesting things going on. What we're supposed to do is have the election of offices for the calendar year of 2021. However, without the two permanent members being in attendance, the only three permanent members would be myself, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, and Jim Corkins. So unless the three, unless we want to vote, because three constitutes the quorum, if we want to vote for Jim and Vice Chairman and Secretary, we can do it, or we can put it off to the next meeting with all five present. Jim, what do you want to do?
I think avoid any appearance of conflict of interest that we wait for a full body.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn?
I agree.
Okay, so we'll we'll put the vote for election of offices off to the March meeting. We received communication concerning Agenda Item Number 1, 01, JH Holdings Group LLC. And I think, Dan Agia, do you want to present? Do you want me to read your communication?
No, I would gladly reiterate what I sent in earlier today. Good evening, Board members. You may recall that this petition has been carried over for a few months. We had asked that it be tabled for three months, I believe, back in December to allow us to look through the various letters that were received from abutters as well as some city officials. We have done so and we have prepared and submitted a revised plan that we have asked that the administrative staff in the office re-advertise and re-notify the abutters with regards to the new project description. We have pared down the project dramatically, but I think it would be inappropriate to discuss until that re-advertising and re-notification took place. So we are on schedule for that to be done so, so that we could be heard at the March hearing. I have sent electronic copies as well to the planning staff. So if anybody would like to see them quickly tomorrow or the following day or any abutter, by all means, call the office and they should be able to forward you the information with regards to the revised submission. So we would request that the matter be tabled again till March's hearing and at that point in time, I believe, we should go ahead and present the petition.
So the March meeting is March 19th, 2021, is that correct, Patty?
March 15th, yeah.
Okay.
My, my meeting schedule says March 18th.
Yeah.
Eighteenth or nineteenth?
Eighteenth. Yeah.
Okay, let's double check the date, so there's no...
It's the same as February's. The dates are the same.
Oh, I'm just, I'm looking at the pre-printed. Okay, the eighteenth.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, so I, I see there's lots of people out there that may be concerned about this matter. So we have a motion, we're not taking any evidence this evening, but we have the motion from the petitioner's representative to allow them to file an amended petition, re-advertise, and come back before the Board on March 18th. Is there anyone that was here this evening for Agenda Item Number 01 without giving any evidence that has any questions before the Board takes the vote on this?
I have a question.
Who's that, Lynn?
Yes.
Counsel Pereira, is that you? Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I have a question. I'm not sure and I hope that you'll be able to answer. How many times can something be tabled? In the zoning board, is there a limitation or not? I'm just curiosity.
No, it's up to the Board to vote, to determine, to give them permission to table it or go forward. So it's within the discretion of the Board. The Board will listen to the request. Obviously, their petition, and Dan, don't let me speak out of turn. The original petition was something that they wanted to modify either from public comment or opposition letters, so they've done something different. So rather than, I guess, withdraw the petition, they're asking to resubmit and re-advertise as if it's a new petition. But a simple answer to your question, Counsel Pereira, is there's no limit, it's up to the Board to decide. There's no rule that says one or two.
The reason that I ask, Mr. Chairman, is that this item has brought numerous calls to many of the counselors and for it to be, you know, tabled and continued and everybody comes and then it's tabled, people are getting a little frustrated with that. So that's why I ask how many times it can be tabled. If it can be tabled, you know, up to the Board, then I have to respect that and I just want people to be able to know, you know, what the Board can and cannot do. But thank you so much for answering that, I appreciate it. Attorney Assam.
You're welcome, Counsel Pereira. Any other questions? All right, so that's Dan's motion on this particular project. If we grant him permission to re-file, re-advertise, and come back, we'll see him in March. If we say no, then it goes forward this evening or he can withdraw it and we can decide with or without prejudice, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant permission to resubmit on March 18th.
Okay, Jim Corkins makes a motion to
Second.
resubmit, second by Joe Pereira. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. So this particular item, 01, will be heard on March 18th, 2021. Abutters will be notified and re-advertized and published.
Thank you very much.
And the publication fees will be paid by the petitioner.
That's correct.
Thank you. The next, Dan, do you want to do the other three, the other three agenda items that you have? We can move them off the list because I know some of the people are here for five and six.
If there are people waiting, then yes, absolutely, we can, we can get them on, on their way.
So do you want to do Spencer Street, do them in order? Agenda Item Number 3, Ponton Associates Real Estate LLC, 722 Spencer Street, Lot D857?
Yes, again, for the record, Dan Agiar of SciTech CEC with addresses in the City of Fall River as well as Rainham and Dartmouth, Massachusetts. This item is with regards to 722 Spencer Street. Joe Pont, who was the owner or the manager of the LLC who owns the property, wanted to be on this call this evening because this is a repetitive petition, so that he wanted the ability to be heard. His office is actually shut down right now due to an illness that everyone has been dealing with and Joe himself is sick. So he has asked that we table this matter to next month's meeting so that he would be available to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Okay, so any of you out there up here for this particular item, that's the request that's being made by Mr. Ponton Associates' representative to continue this matter or to table this matter to the March 18th meeting. We won't take any evidence this evening, but if there's anyone who has any input about that motion, I'll be happy to listen to it. All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to allow the petition to be heard on the March 18th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow the petitioner permission to resubmit or to postpone the discussion until the March 18th meeting.
Okay, so that's the motion by Jim Corkins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Marasette, any discussion on the motion? No discussion on the motion. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. So Ponton Associates, Agenda Item Number 3, will be heard March 18th, 2021.
Thank you.
Agenda Items Number 5 and 6, you want to do those together, Dan?
Sure, as the chairman stated initially in his presentation this evening, Items Number 5 and 6 will only be afforded a four-member Board this evening due to the absence of a few Board members.
So we would request- And I can't listen to it.
That's correct.
I just want everybody to know that's why it's a four-member Board.
So we would ask that Items 5 and 6 also be tabled to the March hearing so that they can be afforded a five-member Board where four members, a vote of four, is required to move a petition forward.
Okay, so I know that Karen Souza and I know that, where are you? Debbie, Debbie Sardina, they were interested in this petition. I don't, you, I don't know, Patty, will they get notice again?
Yes, I can send it back out again.
All right, so if you can send it-
No, because it's tabled to date certain, so they'll just know it's March 18th is the meeting and-
All right, so Karen, Karen and Debbie, write it down, March 18th will be the hearing of this, please, if the Board grants it. So that's the petition, that's the motion to move it to March 18th. Do I have a motion? Motion to continue this matter to March 18th, Jim Corkins?
The matter to, to March 18th meeting.
Okay, Joe Pereira makes the motion to move it to March 18th, to table it to March 18th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Marasette, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. So four, so five and six are moved, tabled until the March 18th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you.
And Debbie Sardina and Karen Souza, you've got those dates.
Yes, March 18th, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Agenda Item Number 1. Will Nick Fenor, 1034 Robeson Street, Lot M320. This is a variance request to operate a law office at his residence waiving all zoning requirements in the G District, lot size 4,478 square feet. Is anybody here for the petition of this evening? Sir, I think you're talking, I can't hear you. You're on mute. No, unmute yourself.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Will you identify yourself, please?
Alex, can you tell?
If he doesn't know how to unmute, tell him just hold down the spacebar while he's talking.
It looks like he is unmuted, though.
It does.
Yeah, he's not showing up as muted.
Let me, let me, let me see if I can-
He may have his volume all the way down so it's not picking up.
Can you check your volume on your computer, sir?
As I say, can't hear you, it's coming upside down, beautiful. That doesn't work. Oh, he can hear us?
He can hear us, yes.
Alex, can you tell if his audio is hooked up?
Okay, thank you. You say in one minute.
Okay. Yes, okay, one minute. Well, what, if he can hear, is Bill Kenny, I got a 30-second question on this petition for you. I don't know whether you had a chance to review it at all.
I review all the petitions.
Very good answer.
It was a trick.
It's in the G District. And home occupations are permitted in the G District.
Correct.
Okay, was there something that I was missing in the review? Why would be, why this man had to come before the Board?
I think I actually, you and I communicated by email on that same question. I, I think it's a home occupation that it's allowed.
Under the definition, it's allowed, so I just, if, if that's Mr., if that's Mr. Willnick, I don't know if you can hear us, but can you respond? No.
Do you want me to try? I've got his phone number here, maybe I can call-
You know what we'll do? This is what we'll do. If you have his phone number, can you call and we'll come back to this item?
I'll try.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Okay, well, leave that alone for a minute, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 2. Patricia A. Petty, 1920 Blossom Road, Lot W1420. This is a variance request to subdivide the existing 28 plus or minus acre parcel into two lots, constructing a new single-family dwelling on a conforming four plus or minus acre parcel and leaving the existing single-family dwelling constructed in 1850 on 23 plus or minus acre parcel with reduced frontage in an R8 single-family and a WWD overlay district.
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we move forward, with regards to home occupations, there are a bunch of provisions under 86467 that he has to meet. So maybe he's exceeded one of those or doesn't meet one of them, I'm guessing maybe. But you guys can deal with that when you get there. So it's not just by right, there are a number of caveats that they do have to meet.
Question would be, does he have clients going to the office because that provision does not allow customers to go to the location if it's a-
So there are eight, there are eight different subsections under that, but you guys can deal with that when you get there. Moving forward on petitioner, petition item number two, as the chairman has stated, this is with regards to the request to subdivide the real estate at 1920 Blossom Road. This is a very large parcel of land that contains a single-family home, a very old single-family home. And we were proposing to subdivide it, creating a conforming lot so that a granddaughter could construct a new single-family home and leaving the original owner in the existing home on a, on a lot with a reduced frontage. We did receive communication from Paul Ferland from the Water Department late this afternoon and I did have a phone call with him and a discussion with regards to his letter asking the Board to deny the variance. We had a very productive discussion and the result of it was that we would restrict the use of the remaining acreage so that no further development of that parcel could take place. Now that would protect a large portion of land along the city's water supply. By right, we could go through with possibly a four to a five-lot residential subdivision, but the owner, again, has sold off a number of parcels out of this, allowing family members to all build this little compounded area and this would be the last one that she would want to have cut out and she would not be opposed to restricting the rest of this area for further development. So Paul Ferland is going to put together a proposed restriction and get it to me so that I can go over it with the applicants to make sure that they are, that they are willing to accept that restriction. And I think it would be prudent for us to have that discussion before we present to the Board and ask you to make any approval based upon any conditions of such. So again, we would ask-
Is your petition to, is your motion to table it to the next meeting? So we're going to double-
Yeah, Paul said he would get me something pretty quickly, so I'm hoping he can get it to us in time for review prior to that meeting. So yes, I do believe that a, a tabling of this to the next meeting would be prudent.
Okay, is there anyone here that came in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? All right, members of the Board, we can't table it unless we vote and give them authority to table it.
He's, he's addressed my only concern, so my motion is to table.
All right, so Joe Pereira's motion is to table this to the March 18th meeting of 2021. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jim Corkins, yes?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes, so we'll take Agenda Item Number 3. Excuse me?
I said, thank you very much.
March 18th, okay, we'll take care of that. That takes care of that. We got Miss One Realty, Number 4.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Can I just interject? I've talked with Mr. Fenor.
Yes.
And he's tried a couple of alternative ways, he can still hear us, but he can't make himself be heard. I, I do have the petition in front of me, if you want, I could just recite his argument for the benefit of the Board members or I suppose you could table it to a point in time where he might have access to a better computer hookup, whatever the Board thinks.
Has he tried to unmute again?
Say this again?
See if he can unmute again now that he's back, back on.
Yeah, he's tried and he's still not able to make us hear him.
Could we have Bill call him again and-
He's got him on the phone. Bill's got him on the phone right now, don't you, Bill?
Well, I just hung up with him, but I can get him back.
But if we call, would that be okay and have him talk through the phone to the meeting? Well, he also can call into the meeting.
Okay, well, if he can hear, is he can call into the meeting, maybe that'll work, Bill.
Yeah. Give him the phone number.
Do we have that, Andy?
I'm just looking for the-
He should have it, it should be on his agenda too that he received.
Mr. Willnick, can you hear us? Do you have, do you have the phone number? Do you have the phone number to call? And he says yes. Why don't you try that?
I see Bill's mouth moving.
Folks, he has several different phone numbers, which one should he use?
Anyone.
Okay, so Bill, while you're working with that, let, let's move on to the other agenda item.
As you wish.
Okay. Let's go to Agenda Item Number 7. Peter J. Whalen and Donna Whalen, Ford Judson Street, Lot I2483.
David, David, did you skip over number 4?
Yeah.
Maybe I did, Carolyn. Oh, is that, I'm sorry, that's what I started to do and then we got back to Agenda Item Number 1. MSS1 Realty Trust, 218230 Rhode Island Avenue, Lot E7 and Number 26. This is a variance request to allow the operation of a restaurant with signage with a portion of the existing commercial use within a portion of the existing commercial use building. The existing commercial building was permitted via zoning relief in 2017. It's in an R8 district, lot size 10,062 square feet.
Good evening, Chairman. Again, for the record, Dan Agiar of SciTech CEC here this evening on behalf of MSS1 Realty Trust, who is the landowner of this real estate at 218230 Rhode Island Avenue. You may all recall that this petition or this parcel has been before you on a number of occasions, combining parcels, proposing the construction of a dental office or expanding the existing dental office, I apologize, signage relief. And as you, if you've driven by recently, they have finally just about completed construction and it looks fantastic. Dr. Salem has done a great job out there. During this difficult time, however, he has found that he does not have a need for this entire structure that he has built due to COVID. So what he has requested, and he came to me to discuss this, is that there is a 2,000-square-foot portion of the big, of the building, commercial building that was previously permitted, went through site plan review, 2,000 square feet of it, the northerly end of the building, he would like to allow a restaurant facility to move into that location, primarily take out maybe one or two small table areas within this 2,000-square-foot area. Again, this is in an R8 district. A relief was granted, allowing this commercial structure to be built in the parking lot that you see on the plan before you and if you drive by, you see that as well. Now, this is directly across the street on Rhode Island Avenue from what used to be A1 Pizza, Phoenix Hot Dogs. There's an auto pot facility, so directly across the street is a VL district that allows all of these types of commercial uses that would be very similar in nature to this use. So the proposal before you is to allow 2,000 square feet of the existing structure to be utilized as a restaurant. There would be signage added to the previously permitted pylon sign and then there would also- And then there would also be a three foot tall, twenty-six foot long block letter facade, lettering mimicking exactly what's out there now for the dental facility that sits on the face of the building, does not extend beyond the roof line to ensure that no light spillage carries over to the residential neighborhood behind the property. So technically, there'd be no exterior construction beyond what's already been permitted and already been constructed. At the time of the previous application, it was required that he have a total of twenty parking spaces for the entire facility. Now, with having a reduction of the dental office and the proposal of this new space, I would offer that we meet the required parking requirements for the two uses, even if they weren't running simultaneously and having offset peaks. The twenty spaces would cover us for the dentist office of one space per employee plus six per customers. And then for the restaurant use, one per employee and then ten spaces for customers. With having nine and eleven, that adds up to the twenty that is currently provided on the site. There wouldn't be no need for any additional site plan review. This would simply allow him to utilize that one square, two thousand square foot portion of the building for restaurant purposes. The proposed hours of operation would be from Monday through Saturday, eleven AM to nine PM. And then on Sundays from twelve to seven PM. If you have any specific questions regarding the application, I would be more than glad to answer them. This normally would be moved as a special permit with expanding or a change in use of the building. However, since the building was constructed under the approval of a variance, we are not afforded that ability. So we do have to file a new variance application.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of the board?
Yeah, I do have one question, Dan. How many tables do you envision there? I'm just trying to see how much traffic, that additional traffic it will bring.
Well, like I said, it's primarily from my understanding, and Dr. Salem is on the phone this evening, that it will be primarily a takeout. I would say maybe there would be two tables of four if someone wanted to sit there and eat. But it will be set up primarily as, as takeout. And if you wanted to limit that number of, of tables or occupants for seating, again, the, the city's parking requirements don't really distinguish between restaurant uses. They have, you know, the setup as I've previously stated. But I am sure the doctor would have no problem limiting whatever seating may, may take place. It may even just be a little counter along the window area that allows people to sit, but he may be able to answer that question better than I could.
So when I, when I vetted, vetted the potential tenant who I can't disclose their name for confidentiality reasons, they're currently an employee at another restaurant. Their statement was, this will be a eighty-five to ninety percent carryout and delivery type restaurant.
I think they'll have to get a certificate of occupancy from the building inspector anyway, that's going to tell them what the maximum occupancy is going to be. But if that's what they're going to limit it to, we can put that in there, Carolyn.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not for me, thank you.
Ricky?
No.
Anything, no, Joe?
No, my only concerns is, is, is parking and traffic, so we seem to be heading in the right direction.
Jim Corkins, anything?
Now, with the limited hours, it makes a difference that but I, I, I just would like to, or I question that the twelve o'clock opening of a restaurant that it, it's usually they'll want to be open by eleven thirty at the latest because a lot of people like to pick up food and get back by twelve, but that's their choice.
I think the hour was eleven AM to nine PM.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was Monday through Saturday. Sunday was twelve to seven.
Oh, well, correct.
Well, Director of Plan, Mr. Kenny, if you're still somewhere. Yeah, there you are, you moved. Any comments on this, anything on this one?
I'm always somewhere.
You shift on this grid, you go, you're traveling around.
I thought you did that.
I have no control.
No, I, and I have no comments on this. I, I see no objection to it. It's on a well-traveled street as it is. They're not going to add that much to the traffic. Parking doesn't appear to be an issue. It is, I think. Is this the petition where the, if they were across the street, they'd be, they wouldn't need a variance?
That's correct.
That's correct.
But I see that, I see a telephone number lighting up over here, five oh eight
That's, that's Mr. Thonar.
Okay, sorry.
He's just shuffling papers and that activates it.
All right, let me ask you, is anyone out there in favor of this petition?
Mr. Chairman, this is Patrick Higgins. I just have a question.
Hey, Patrick, how are you?
Good. Eleven o'clock is a good opening. I, I, if I was opening it, it would be ten thirty because, you know, like the other, Mr. Corkin said, people do like to get their lunch and get out back. I was just wondering if the doctor, if the dentist could tell us, I understand the confidentiality and the, the name of the owner, et cetera, is confidential, but I was just wondering what kind of concept would it be? Would it be Chinese? Would it be?
It is. It's Asian cuisine.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'm in favor of it, Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Is there anyone else in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Okay. Members of the board, could I get a motion to grant with those conditions? Could I get a motion to deny? What do you want to do?
I would make a motion to grant with the conditions for the hours, the eleven AM to nine PM, Monday through Friday and then
Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, excuse me, and Sunday, noon to seven PM. And then another condition at occupants, I don't know how to phrase this, but eighty-five percent should be, you know, carryout, fifteen percent dine-in, something to that effect, just so we
Do you want to limit the number of tables?
I, I don't know, whatever you suggest, if it's limited by the tables or the, the percentage, whatever you suggest.
I don't know how we're going to enforce percentages.
Yeah, I, I think
We could limit the number of tables.
A number of people, I think we could limit it to.
Why, why, why don't we say no more than ten dining occupants at any one time? That's basically two tables.
That's fine.
Which I think, I think will be far in exceedance of what actually sits in there, so I think that'll cover them.
Not, not, so if you put not to exceed ten occupants, that way it, we're saying up to ten, but if the building inspector says they can only have three, they can only have three.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I hear somebody.
Patrick, yeah. I, I don't know that I would limit it to ten occupants because you could have four people waiting in line to pick up a takeout. And there would be occupants of the building. I think I would put the word ten diners versus ten occupants. That's just my personal opinion.
Ten dine-in people.
So Carolyn modified it to what, ten, ten in-house dining?
That's fine.
Thank you. Do we have a second on Carolyn's motion?
I'll second it.
Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carol Lamarrasette?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes, so that petition's granted with those conditions. Okay? Thank you. So now, let's see if I got it right. We go from there to agenda item number seven.
I think we could go back to number one and then let him
Uh, yes, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can, thank you. So this is agenda item number one. We're back
Yes, correct.
Will Nick Knell, ten thirty-four Robeson Street, Lot M three twenty. This is a variance request to operate a law office at his residence, waiving all zoning requirements in the G district, lot size four thousand four hundred seventy-eight square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, members of the board. Should I introduce myself now?
Yes, please, identify yourself for the record, please.
Uh, yes, uh, members of the board, for the record, my name is Will Nick Thonar. I am an attorney residing at ten thirty-four Robeson Street in Fall River. And I have been residing in Fall River since two thousand and ten. Should I say more?
Yes, so what we need you to do
Okay, I'm sorry.
Your own occupation.
Correct. I live in a two-story house. I'm currently residing on the second floor and renting out the first floor. I would like to stop renting out the first floor and conduct my legal practice from there. Uh, I'm requesting for variance to conduct my practice from my residence due to a hardship. I have been diagnosed with agoraphobia and bipolar disorder since two thousand eight. Agoraphobia is, is an, is an anxiety disorder that often develops after one or more panic attacks. My symptoms include fear and avoidance of places, situations that may, that might cause feelings of panic, entrapment, embarrassment, daytime fatigue, poor concentration, shift in mood and energy. Um, my conditions have caused me to have lost many opportunities. Uh, if I'm allowed to work from my home, I will be able to control when I go out and the time to begin my workday. I will be conducting my practice as a solo practitioner. My wife will be my only staff. Because of my condition, I will be using technology to hold the majority of my meetings with clients and other attorneys. Now, if there are any questions, I will gladly answer them. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you anticipate any clients coming to the office itself to conduct business?
Um, I do anticipate clients coming in, but I will not be having, because of the small amount of space that I have, um, I won't be able to have a lot of clients in the office. And I will all, I'll, I'll also be able to use technology to meet with my clients, so coming to the office might not be an issue.
Okay. Were you planning on having any signage on the building?
Um, yes, I will.
Can you describe the sign for us, please?
Uh, the sign will just say the law offices of Will Nick Thonar.
Uh, do you have a dimension for it, two by four, three by three?
Uh, probably, um, it's seven by ten.
Seven foot by ten foot?
Yeah, if, 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 it, it, it should be smaller, then I'll make it smaller. Hello?
Yes, no, no, you, you've got me thinking about the size of that sign on the outside of the building. That's, that's all, seven by ten.
The side, the side should not, the, the side should not be an issue if, if, whatever, what, whatever requirement, uh, 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 whatever the city, the, the planning board decide, then I'll do.
Okay. You, I look at the plan, you have some off-street parking. So anyone who's coming to visit you would be able to park on your premises.
Uh, yeah.
I get, you got the paved driveway in the back off President Avenue. Is that accessible?
Correct.
Uh, how, how many spaces does that parking, that paved parking represent?
Okay, the paved parking right now can hold two cars. And the lawn, if need be, can be used for parking also.
Uh, and, and again, is that off of President Avenue?
Uh, yes, sir.
So, so there's, there's no fence or barrier between that paved parking area and the lawn? That's to be
Not at all.
Is that, is that really parking, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, sir.
No. I'm asking my chairman at this point. No, it could, I mean, I'm looking at the plan. The plan shows the paved area. I mean, the fact that the plan also shows grass, you know, you can park on the grass, I guess, if you need to. But it seems to be a very limited use. It's not is what we're hearing. He and his wife. But I I could, I could only, I could only think about living and working in my practice all day long. Please, God, no.
And working with the wife also.
I duplicate exactly what you've got, but thank God she doesn't come to the office that often.
Mr. Chairman, what, with the provisions of the owner-occupied business, which factors do you see him not meeting that requires a variance?
Well, under eighty-six, four sixty-seven, A, the occupation or profession shall be carried on only within the building, so he meets that. Not more than twenty percent of the floor area of the residence shall be used in the home occupation. So I, he's got that first floor that he's going to use. What percentage that to the whole property, I don't know. So I would suspect if you've got a two-story building and it's fifty percent, that may be in excess. Uh, the home occupation, C, the home occupation shall not serve clients, customers, pupils, salesperson, or the like on the premises, while he says he will have some people coming in.
That's what I saw. But I was thinking that if he was going to go totally, or could go totally electronic, it would eliminate the need, but that other provision on the space percentage probably eliminates that as a option.
Yeah, so that's, I, I and then D, there should be no interior, exterior signs, exterior display, exterior storage of materials or other interior or exterior indication of the home occupation or other variation from the residential character of the premises. The size of that sign just seemed to be some I don't know, we need to think about the size of the sign if he's going to have signage outside. E, no use or storage of, there's no hazardous materials.
Yeah.
Traffic generated shall not exceed volumes normally expected in a residential neighborhood. So I don't
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but there are two provisions there that he doesn't need, it looks like, at least, or two or three, so we need to go ahead with the
With the variance, we do, that's correct. Well
It's trying to avoid it.
As, as I originally read the petition, it just seemed that he was going to work from home electronically.
Right. I, I mean, Chairman, we can, we can probably eliminate one just by talking about space. Does the applicant intend on using the entire first floor of the house for business? Or is there a percentage of space or a part of the space that he would use and another space that would be part of his living quarters that are actually on the second floor?
But what I understood was he was going to live on the second floor and his office was going to be on the first floor.
Right, which would be
So if we, so if we, if we're thinking of granting, then I guess we go through eighty-six, four sixty-seven and say we grant the specifics of, he's exceeding not twenty percent of the floor space. He's going to have the home occupation there. Um, and so we waive the provision, the variance would be of eighty-six, four sixty-seven of those specific items. And the signage, so we're going to have to grant, if he wants a sign, the size of the sign that's going to be affixed to the building. I think it's going to be to the building. I don't think you're gonna, you're not going to have a pole with the, with the sign outside, are you?
Uh, no, I, I will not.
So if we're thinking of granting, that's kind of the restrictions or the variance that we come up with.
If I can ask the applicant, where, where are you thinking about the sign at this point? On, on the porch, on the building?
Uh, on the porch. It would, it would be just a small sign on the porch.
I, I guess what I'm thinking at this point, if I may,
Oh, Joe.
Sign normally would not be allowed. I mean, you're in a very easily identifiable position. You're on the you know, southwest corner of, you know, of Robeson and President's Ave. Um, you know, look for the small sign. So I guess if you do have people coming in, you're in a very easily recognizable position or easily described position. I, I certainly I'm just thinking now, a lot of this point would, would want to minimize that sign as much as possible.
Okay.
But I asked, is the purpose of the sign, do you have like two entrances and you want to direct them to the entrance to the office rather than to the entrance to the office rather than to the residential part of the floor? Is that what it's for? Uh?
Yes, I I have two entrance entrances, one on Robeson Street and the other on uh on President Ave.
So, so you really need a sign just so that somebody goes into the office part of the space, not the residence? Is that, is that a?
Co- correct, yes.
So, so you really wouldn't need much more than like a little, almost a name plaque uh over a doorbell or something? It's not like an advertising sign.
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm thinking, Bill, a small sign, you know.
Yeah.
Two by, I don't know, whether two by two is too big, uh but just a name plaque. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking, just over the door, here you go, law offices of.
Or or on the porch rails. Nice, yeah.
Something that says, here you go, this is where it is.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it could, I'm I'm trying to think, Bill, did you have one of those historic signs on your building?
Um, well, everybody knew it was me, so I didn't need a sign.
No, no, I, yeah, I know that, but I'm saying, wasn't there a plaque on your building, something like Dave Dennis has? It's a plaque that says this is the law offices of, and it's not that big. I don't know. Historic, like a historic house?
Yeah, no, I had a bigger, I had a bigger sign with neon lights and an arrow that would blink pointing towards the door.
Yeah.
Thank you. He just needs a name plaque, like a little, like, I don't know, six inches by two inches or?
How about one square foot?
Sure.
I mean, a foot by a foot, there you go.
Okay. That would more than cover it, I would think.
Okay. One by one. All right. Anything else? Any other specific items? Okay, hearing none. Is there any but? Any other questions, members of the board, what you want, thinking about doing? Let's see if there's anybody in favor or anybody opposed. I don't, I didn't, Patty, I didn't see anything. I printed out for this particular item.
I don't think so.
Okay. So is there anybody out there in favor of this petition? Is there anyone, is there anyone opposed to this petition?
Mister Chairman, by the way, there were no letters of opposition filed.
That's what I was asking Patty. I printed
Yeah, I've got the folder, so there were no, no opposition.
I didn't come across anything for agenda item number one.
No.
All right. So, members of the board, what do you want to do? Do you want to let Mr. Willnick Thonaw have his practice at his house? Or no?
Mister Chairman, my my concern is we we, we've got certain provisions because and and I I completely concur with his needs and 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 willing to address it, but I if the property is sold and that variance goes with it, uh somebody else could put in any kind of business. Uh, is there a way that we can restrict?
No, but I think the limit, I think the limit, not in not any other business, it will be specifically for a law office.
We we can
We can limit it to
Condition it that way.
Yes. We 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 don't have to make it broad for a professional office. It could be for a one, one-person law office. I don't
And and we can limit it to the first floor of the house.
Limit it, absolutely limit it to the first floor of the house.
I mean, considering the mixed use of of the neighborhood and everything else that's right around that. I I
Well, that's what I'm think, you know, that's kind of where I'm going with it.
Um, I would, I would move to grant uh with the conditions that it is uh limited to the first floor as a single uh practicing uh lawyer office. And that the sign limitation be limited to the one by one foot uh that he recommended. I can't think of any other conditions. Parking's still a concern for me, but
Well, so we have, so that parking uh could be we're granting a variance at eighty-six, four sixty-seven as to parking and parking is limited to um off-street parking only. How we're gonna enforce it, I don't know, but that could be a condition of the variance.
All all I'm thinking is if the applicant and his wife are both home, there's the two parking spaces that are taken off.
Could I just interject? By the way, Mister Chairman, I think you'll see in the petition that he says that this floor space that he's gonna devote to the office is so small that he would likely only see one client at a time, so uh the volume of vehicles approaching the 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 place would be pretty small, and that that neighborhood is there's parking in that area. I don't think parking's a concern at that particular neighborhood at this point.
No, but I'm just going by, Bill, what I'm, what I'm doing is eighty-six, four sixty-seven, going through the specific items of what he needs a variance for.
Right, right.
So Joe's trying to address those, I believe, and come up with, okay, how do we deal? What are we granting the variance, not just waiving everything? We grant a variance for parking, we grant a variance for the sign, uh we grant the variance that it's gonna be a one-person law office. And we limited it to the first floor, so the first floor space, uh however you calculate it, if it is more than twenty percent, we've got it covered.
Mister Chairman, if I may, just, Dan Aguirre, um you should also take into account that you are removing the need for two additional parking spaces by removing that a residential unit that would have been on the first floor. So you're actually gaining a space. If you're only gonna see one client at a time, that's actually one vehicle where a, an apartment would have required two off-street parking spaces.
Parking spaces. Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Motion is made. I'll second it.
Joe, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, seconded by Jim Corkins. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none. Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Maraset?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Okay, so that petition is granted with those conditions. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, now, I think we're on number seven, huh? Carolyn, I, please tell me I'm on the right one, number seven.
You're on the right one.
Jay Whalen and Donna Whalen, Ford Judson Street, Lot I, twenty-four eighty-three. Variance request to subdivide the existing parcel of land into two, leaving an existing three-family dwelling on one parcel while constructing a new single-family dwelling on the second parcel, waiving uh the dimensional, I guess it's waiving dimensional requirements in the A-two district.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, again for the record, Dan Aguirre. Here this evening on behalf of uh Peter J. Whalen and Donna Whalen, who own this real estate, uh the corner of York Street and Judson Street. There is an existing three-family structure that is located at the very south westerly corner of this parcel, leaving the very large open yard area heading towards the east. You'll see on the plan that we have submitted uh that the proposed parcel two uh contains an existing garage that would be raised and a new structure would be built on that parcel two. So the shape of this parcel, um being very long along Judson Street, with the unique location of the existing home being very far tucked down to the south um westerly corner of the property, leaves this very large area uh that sits at a little bit of a a topographical elevation difference. We are proposing to create off-street parking uh for the existing three-family to make up for what we were taking away, and there would be off-street parking provided for parcel two as well. You see in the existing neighborhood, there are a number of single-family homes that have been built, some very recently, sitting on similar-sized parcels directly to the east um and then across the street as as well. So this is an A-two district, and we we always run into issues, Mister Chairman, as you know, when we're dealing with with A-two and how to handle these things. Um, we think that the removal of that garage and the construction of a new single-family home in keeping with the new single-family homes that are directly east would be of great benefit to the neighborhood. So with regards to hardship, it would be the shape of the lot and the location of the existing structure um that would allow us or we're seeking relief based upon.
Oh, that that's the, that's the case in a nutshell. It's in the A-two district. You have a pre-existing non-conforming. The house is skewed to one end, and you've got this other part that was possibly used uh with that existing garage, but you have new single-family houses next to it that have been developed, so that becomes an issue, and that's something for the board to consider.
And which
Go ahead.
What what dimensions are we looking for variance on?
Well, it would, variances would would involve both parcels, so we would be leaving the three-family home on a parcel with four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Um, in the A-two district, um that would require and fourteen thousand square feet and one hundred meter frontage. So the lot, the lot already doesn't meet um the requirements for the A-two district, just as many of the other lots. So for the existing built, for the existing home, um we would be asking for area and frontage requirement reductions. And then for the new parcel, it would also be area and frontage. We would meet the building setbacks that we have proposed on this plan before you uh to make sure that the residential abutters to the east, a new home that would be constructed would meet that side yard requirement of twenty feet, so that we would not be on top of them. Um, the other granted relief to the interior lot line would be to ourselves uh of being ten feet. So to the abutting parcel, the single-family home, we we've ensured that we will meet that building setback.
Uh, Dan, just, just a question. Um, I mean, it's non-conforming law, but you're seeking to make it not more non-conforming. So one is going to be about four thousand. What's the size of the other one?
It would be five thousand, five thousand square feet with seventy-two feet of frontage. And I apologize, if you don't have a plan, I can share one.
Oh, I have it. I just, um, I can't, I don't have my reading glasses with me.
Care if you need it, but you're too far away today.
Thank you for answering.
Yeah, it's gonna make it it's gonna make it the smallest lot in the neighborhood with the three family on it.
You are correct. But we would be, because of the location of the home, we would be able to provide that off-street parking. And because the house is so close to the street line, it does, it does afford us a normal-sized yard to the side of the house.
Yeah, no, I go back to the analysis of eighty-six, thirty-four, you're not we're we're admonished for taking either conforming lots or non-conforming lots and making them not more non-conforming. And then when we got the um the decision or the opinion from Corporation Council that said, no, we have the authority to do it, provided it meets forty-eight, section ten, variance requirements, shape, topography, soil conditions, and we have a hardship, uh that's something to consider. Uh, Carolyn raises the appropriate, I think, uh analysis. We have a pre-existing non-conforming supporting the three family. You've got that rear yard uh that was being used already with that garage that's gonna be raised, so do we want to continue or create two non-conforming lots, even though I know there was some relief granted on those other lots to the east, but that's something for the board to decide. That's just my observation on it.
Mister Chairman, did you receive a letter of support from the neighbors? I I thought the applicant told me that he had submitted one, but he did not send one.
I'll defer to Patty, but everything she gave me, I got nothing on number seven.
Patty, Patty can There was some.
Patty can defer to me.
Do you have a bill? Was there anything on number seven?
Yeah, I've got uh letters or petitions from uh one, two, three, four, five immediate neighbors. We've got thirty-five York, twenty-nine Judson, fifty York, thirty Judson, and fourteen York all in favor. Uh, it actually reads, uh I'm in favor of a new single-family with off-street parking for two vehicles and off-street parking for four vehicles for the existing three-family street of three-family on Ford Judson Street.
Was that one, was that, was that one petition signed by them?
Uh, it's actually in three parts, uh two, two, and one, same petition.
Can you just read, can you, would you read the parcels again, so I can just look at them, or we can look at them on the plan?
Yeah, thirty-five York.
Wait a minute, thirty-five York, uh
Directly across the street, dude.
Thirty-five, I see it, okay, directly across the street.
And uh fifty York.
I blow it.
Fifty York, five zero York.
That's York Street on the other side of Judson Street?
Yes.
Opposite, okay, go ahead.
We've got fourteen York.
Right above it.
Right above it, direct above it, go ahead.
Twenty-nine Judson. And um
Twenty-nine, directly across the street.
Directly across the street.
Twenty-nine and thirty Judson. That's it.
And the brothers to the new one, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what we've got. Um, I don't know whether there's any I don't know if there's any utilities going out to the garage, but whether or not, Dan, the affidavit, if we if we grant it separate utilities, I don't know whether it needs it or not, but
Yeah, I mean, it would have to go through site plan review, and it would need its own separate utilities, for sure.
So is, let me, before I ask the director of planning, is there any other board members have any questions on this particular project? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Yes, I, um, yes, my name is John Sylvia. Not that I'm opposed, hi, and not that I'm opposed to this, but across the street on York Street is a six-family. It looks like there's probably four or five parking spots. So I would recommend, I think this would be a good thing to recommend, is Mister Aguirre had brought up on the, on the Robeson Street property that there would, there'd be two cars in that gentleman's first floor, so I would recommend that we and uh make sure that we have six parking spots for that three-family house, so that doesn't uh kind of impede on the parking for everybody else, because I think there probably is a parking issue there. And I would think that we'd wanna have four parking spots for the single-family house. Um, 'cause we're always complaining about plowing and things like this and having on-street parking. Um, I think that would be good to look at, and I think another thing that comes into play is, I know you guys were mentioning, you know, we've previously approved things in that area. I think when we do approve these things, then you can have people come back, like Mister Aguirre are saying, well, you approved this area, so why won't you approve this one? So when does it end? But I think if you guys want to approve it, we should have six off-street parking uh spaces for the three-family and at least four, 'cause we're gonna have two people living there, and you're gonna probably have two children over time. Then that way, it's not gonna impede on the people that live there now, the off-street parking. Thank you.
Patty, did you get that gentleman's name?
Yep, John Sylvia.
Thank you. Do we get an address for him?
No, John, can I have your address, please?
Yes, sure. It's uh fifty-one Ada Street, ADA.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mister Chairman, if I may, we would have no problem providing six off-street parking spaces for the three-family. However, um, limiting the uh new single-family home
The family to two off-street. This, the two, four, the six for the three-family, they're gonna be I I don't know whether you're gonna come off York Street or back-to-back, you're gonna have that stacking of the cars in the back, but
We'll, we'll figure it out one way or another.
All right, let me see what the director of planning has to say on this.
Well, my question was gonna be exactly what uh Dan just answered. If you could increase the off-street parking a little bit, I think that uh makes it a lot more palatable.
All right, so that was your big concern, is the parking. You got that
Yeah.
You got that three-family, six off-street parking spaces, and the new single-family with the two by bylaw.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so the anyone else? Okay, motion to grant, motion to deny. Have they met the burden of uh forty-eight, section ten, shape, topography, soil condition? Hardship. Okay, motion to deny?
I would make a motion.
Carolyn Maraset, motion to deny. Do I have a second on the motion to deny?
Yeah, I will second that.
Joe Pereira seconds, motion to deny. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Okay, hey, what, I hear somebody. Okay, Ricky Sahadi, motion to deny.
No.
No, you're not, you, you don't want to deny it. Okay. Jim Corkins.
Yes.
Yes. Joe Pereira.
Yes.
Carol Lamar said.
Yes.
Assad, yes. So this petition is denied. Uh, the vote was four to one. Thank you. So that's number, that was number seven, Waylon. Uh, number, ready for number eight? Advanced Dental Spa, eight twenty-five New Boston Road, Lot P fourteen-one. Variance request to rebuild the existing professional office building. Two thousand thirty-five square feet into proposed medical professional office building. And or retail operation with two thousand seven hundred square feet or less. I think it's twenty, two thousand seven hundred square feet, more or less building footprint area. The area also needs a variance to allow two residential units on the second floor in the G district. I see attorney Salino and I see Mister Scott Adams. So who's got the lead on this?
That is correct. Good evening. For purposes of the record, attorney Peter Salino, five fifty Locust Street in Fall River. For the petitioner, uh, presenting the petition with me will be Scott Adams. Uh, Scott, if you want to state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Scott Adams, principal with Advanced Engineering Group, addresses five hundred North Broadway, East Providence, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, so this petition, uh, relates to real estate located at eight twenty-five New Boston Road. Uh, for identification purposes, that would be the north, uh, easterly corner of the intersection of Oak Grove Avenue. And New Boston Road. As Mister Chairman indicated, the petition seeks to demolish the existing building. Which was southeastern Mass Credit Union Harrington Insurance and a variety of other uses. And reconstruct a mixed-use building on the site that would contain the, uh, doctor's dental spa or practice. On the first floor with two residential apartments on the second floor. The, to me, the hardship here really is twofold. First, you have a structure that per the city records was built in nineteen oh two. And effectively sits right on New Boston Road, leaving a large open space in the rear. It has multiple curb cuts, both on New Boston Road and Oak Grove Avenue. And then additionally, the shape is unique in the sense that because of the traveled way east-west of New Boston Road. The northerly lot line is, uh, at an angle, making the property or the, the parcel not quite square, not quite rectangle. Something unique in, in between. The property sits in a G district, so the use would not be allowed by right. Um, so we need a variance for that as well. And in terms of. The dimensional components, before I turn it over to Scott to go over the site flow and some of the technical considerations. We don't really need very, very many variances as it relates to dimension. Um, in fact, uh, we are okay on front, uh, frontage, side yard, rear yard, and overall area. We can also comply with the parking requirements. The dimensional shortage is the front yard setback. Um, the plan indicates that it's only about six feet. And that'd be six feet shy of what we would be required to produce. I don't think that the, uh, petition is inconsistent with the zoning bylaw, in order to derogate from the intent of the bylaw. To the west of the site, you have a Shell gas station, you have multifamily housing. You have single-family housing and a cemetery all right there. So I, I don't think it derogates from the intent of the bylaw. And, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Mister Adams to go over some of the technical components of the plan before the board.
Thank you, Attorney Salino.
Hello, thank you, board. Um, one item, I just wanted to circle back on what Mister Salino just mentioned, the, the frontage setback. While we are proposing, uh, six feet, the, as existing in the field now, it's only two feet. So we are not making it more non-conforming, we're actually increasing the conforming, we're getting closer to conforming. Uh, for the, for, for, yeah, setback. So as part of this project, you know, we looked at the safety of the site, the distances, the, the width of the curb cut. Currently, there are three curb cuts on the premises, one on very large one on Oak Grove Ave, that's roughly sixty-two feet in length. And there are two on New Boston Road, one that is twenty-four feet in length and one that's approximately fifteen feet in length. As part of this project, we're going to close up the curb cut that is closest to the intersection, which is roughly. Twenty-three feet away from, from that intersection line. Is that existing curb cut that we're gonna close up and landscape?
Is that on Oak Grove Scott or is that on, or is that on New Boston Road?
That is on New Boston Road, the closest.
So the New Boston Road one will get terminated.
Yep, curb will get closed up, curving, new sidewalk in that vicinity. Um, instead of having three full turning movements at all location, there's only gonna be one, um, curb cut that's full mo, that's full in and out. On Oak Grove and Avenue. And it's, that's the furthest curb cut basically away from the intersection. So that's where we push that as far south as we could. And then the other, only other entrance, which basically be the fire access road around the building, which would be a fifteen-foot wide curb cut. Out onto New Boston Road, as far into the property line as physically possible, uh, for that location there. Um, with respect to the site in general, there's, the building there now is roughly two thousand thirty-five square feet. We're proposing an increased building of twenty-seven, a footprint of twenty-seven hundred square feet. It actually works much better on the property, allows us actually better internal circulation, better traffic control measures. Um, it actually decreases the impervious area of the site by about eleven percent. Currently, it's just about ten thousand five hundred square feet of impervious on the twelve thousand square foot lot. Uh, it's gonna be at roughly ninety-four hundred square feet of impervious. Um, this application or something similar to it has been approved two or three times in the past. Once it was for Southern Mass Credit Union's, um, branch, and they had a two-lane drive-through, which was on the easterly side of the project. Um, then my firm came back in front of the board in two thousand nineteen with permission to knock the building down and rebuild it in a similar footprint. Um, to what is proposed with a roughly a two thousand square foot building, leaving the impervious area. Uh, we went in front of the site plan review committees group, went through their process and, and incorporated all their comments into a design plan that they approved. Those comments have been incorporated into this plan set. I understand, you know, um, Bill Mister Roth is no longer with us and, and, you know. Bill Kenny is, is back in, in place. Obviously, we'll have to circulate that to his group as well. And get their comments and incorporate those into the plan set. I assume is a condition of approval, should this board approve. Um, but we did take the original department head's considerations into, um, discussion when presenting this plan to, to the board. We also have, as part of their request was infiltrating the roof drainage of the building, which we are proposing. A drywall to be installed within the landscape bed in the front of the building. Um. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. It's a, it's a pretty straightforward application.
Okay. I have a, I have a question. Um, how big are these residential units gonna be? Is it two-bedroom apartments, one-bedroom apartment? How many occupants do you see living there?
It's been, uh, Dr. Yasbeck is, is on the call and he may be able to better answer, but the way it's been explained to me is he'd like to do two-bedroom units, two units each.
And I believe Scott, you're, I'm sorry, Carolyn, Scott, your parking calculations are based on two cars per unit, right?
Yes, for total of four.
Okay.
And then Peter, maybe you can address this question. In the application, um, I mean, you're obviously seeking two residential units. But then in your application, under question three. The answer is the parcel has been used for commercial use for a number of years, is not conducive to residential use. I mean, that seems kind of opposite of what you're asking for then.
I, I can clarify that. I think the intent of that paragraph or that statement was really not conducive to building a single-family home or single-family homes. Not that you couldn't have an apartment upstairs.
Okay.
Because of, I think because of the signage, the intersection and the impervious area, it's more suited to a commercial use.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else? Members of the board? Okay, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Uh, Director of Planning, Bill Kenny, what, what if any input do you have on this?
Well, Carolyn, uh, asked the questions that I was going to ask and, um, certainly is. The, the commercial use is certainly consistent with what's been there for as long as I can remember. I think there was a Realtor's office, uh.
Yeah, Chris, Chris McNaul, yeah.
For quite a while and, um, the, uh, uh. Building showing its age. It was built, what, nineteen oh four?
Nineteen oh two is what the public record says, Mister Kenny.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, it's, it's an intersection that is already, has a mixed use. Um, and I, I see, uh, no major issues with it.
Okay, thank you. All right, members of the board, what do you want to do? Motion to grant. Um, Peter, just, Peter or Scott, the specific. I, I just want to be clear on the specific variance for setback. It's only the front yard setback that you need the variance for. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it, and it's a, the, the variance is, would be six foot from the, a six-foot setback.
Yeah, and Scott, if you can just verify, I'm looking at a PDF, you know, printed on an eight and a half by eleven. Is, is it in fact six feet plus or minus?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so the variance request is six feet on the front yard setback?
Yes.
And other than that, you don't need anything else? As much as I like seeing the two of you, what I want you coming back for.
No, dimensionally, no.
Okay. Let's just be clear. Okay, so that, so that would be the variance, front yard setback, six feet.
Correct.
Okay.
There's already a large sign on the premises that they intend to, to keep. We're trying to keep the sign in its existing location, so.
Keeping the existing signage?
Yes.
Okay. All right, members of the board, motion to grant, motion to deny, motion to grant.
Mister Chairman, I'm just not sure. Have we checked to make sure those are favor, those are opposed from the listening?
I asked, was there anybody?
I'm not sure you had, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you. I need that. So let me just double check. Is there anyone out there in favor of this petition? Is there anyone there opposed to this petition? Okay, now, can I get a motion to grant with conditions or a motion to deny?
I move approval, uh, subject to, uh. Site review committee.
Site plan review and the variance of the six-foot frontage.
Yeah.
Yes, specifically.
That, that's the approval, yes.
Okay. That's Jim's motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Joe Pereira. Any discussion on the motion?
I think it was Rick who seconded it.
Oh, who was it? Did, did Ricky, you raise your hand?
Simultaneous, give it to Rick.
No, I just want to be clear because we're, we're stuck with Zoom and I want to make sure we have a clear record. So motion was made by Jim Corkins, it was seconded by Ricky Sahadi. Is that correct? That's where we are? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carol Lamar said.
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that petition is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number nine, Savoy Street LLC. One eleven Savoy Street, Lot L nine seventy-three. Variance request to subdivide the existing twelve thousand square foot parcel of land into two parcels. Leaving an existing single-family dwelling on one parcel while constructing a new single-family dwelling on the second parcel. Waiving the requirements in the S, single-family district lot size twelve thousand square feet. Who's got this one? Dan, is that you?
I do, Mister Chairman, again, Dan Mackeyar of SciTech slash C E C. Regards to the real estate at one eleven Savoy Street. As the chairman stated, this petition requests permission to subdivide the existing twelve thousand square foot parcel into two. Leaving an existing single-family home on a parcel with seven thousand square feet and seventy feet of frontage. We would be providing new off-street parking, uh, for that single-family dwelling. And then second to the petition, we are trying to carve out. A five thousand square foot parcel of land with fifty feet of frontage. To build a small, single-family home, again with off-street parking, um, as well. When we went out and we looked at this parcel, when the applicant first came to me, we, we did take a, a long look at the existing neighborhood. And you'll see that this parcel is located at the outskirts of the S district. It actually sits just west of an existing church building, accessed from Eastern Avenue. As well as an auto repair facility that you all know occupies both sides of, uh, Bard Street. Which comes, uh, off of Bedford Street. So that's, that's the real S district that abuts us. Directly to the north and directly to the south of us on, uh, on Savoy Street are single-family homes. On lots that do not comply to the S district as well. Directly across the street, it is a G district. And what we've done is we've created our lot. Will comply with the requirements of that G district being fifty feet of frontage and five thousand square feet. We have also proposed building setbacks greater than what the G district, um, requires. So again, we have this situation where we have a larger parcel than the remainder of the neighborhood with a home pushed off, uh, to one side. Uh, we can easily provide the off-street parking requirements for the two off-street lots. And what we've done is we have gone out to all of the abutters. Uh, you'll see that you have a petition, I believe, from every erected butter across the street. With the exception of the Jehovah's Witness Church, um, that have all signed the petition. All in favor, uh, of, of this petition moving forward. So again, the hardship description is just strictly with the location of the existing home. We would be technically be making this land court parcel a little bit bigger than what it previously was. Taking some land away to make it seven thousand square feet. So although it's been merged for zoning purposes, they are technically two separate parcels due to land court. Um, registered land and, and recorded land. If you have any specific, uh, questions regarding the application, I'd be more than glad to answer.
Uh, Dan, just one, I mean, right now it's a conforming law, it's twelve thousand square feet and you want to divide it into two, that's.
That, that's correct. That's why we appear before the zoning board of appeals.
And the minimum lot requirement is twelve thousand, correct?
For this district, directly across the street, which is really what we're dealing with, is five thousand square feet. As I stated when we initially gave the presentation, this is at the outskirts of an S district where there are no S district lots.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, uh, my, my question, Dan, is that. The current driveway is somewhere around where the new lot line is, is that correct?
That is correct.
Where are you intending to put off-street parking then for these two separate lots?
So the, the new driveway, if, if you actually look at it, the door to get into one eleven. Is actually to the northerly end of this building. So our new off-street parking spaces. For the existing single-family home will be built at that northerly end up near one twenty-three Savoy Street. And then the, um, new single-family home, it's, it's parking will be most likely. Almost directly where the existing parking is.
So how much distance you have between the property line and the structure of one eleven on that north side?
It would be at minimum.
It looks like it's about twelve feet, I'm just.
No, no, no. The existing single-family home, a, as you see, the proposed single-family home would have a side yard setback of ten. So the setback to that existing.
His question, his question, Dan, is on the north side of one eleven, we're at a butts one twenty-three, what's the side yard there? Are you still there? Do we get lost?
I think we lost, Dan.
His name's down in the corner, but we lost him.
The star of the show.
Here he is, he's coming back on.
Yeah.
Dan?
Business in the age of COVID.
He, he lost power at his office.
Did he? Uh huh. Well, we, we need a response to that before we go any further. Um, he, he must have his cell phone, he can call in. Lost, he, he just lost power trying to call in. I mean, in all fairness, he's here to present, we probably should not take a vote without his. No, no, let him, I want him to call back in. I don't want to go forward without it. Uh, because I think that's an important question. They're shifting. The entrance to one eleven is to the north, if that's where they're gonna have the parking, let him give us whether or not it's ten or twelve feet.
While we're waiting for him to call in, can we move on to the next item? While we're waiting for him to call in, can we move on to the next item?
Pardon me?
While we're waiting for him to call in, can we move on to item number ten?
The open meeting law violation, we can, I guess if we want to do that. Patty, just, just correct me. We have I want, I see Patrick still there, so I want to let him know. I know the minutes that we have to, uh, what month, please?
August, September, October, November, December, and January.
Okay, those are all the ones that I reviewed that you sent to me. Those minutes are all done.
Yep.
Okay, so Patrick Higgins on Agenda Item Number Ten filed on January twenty-fourth regarding minutes of the meeting. Um, so for this meeting, uh, the chairman's view is we have to respond to it. So we've asked Corporation Counsel, so I need the board to authorize that particular petition or that complaint to be forwarded to Corporation Counsel for response. In parallel with that, I know that Patty has done the August, September, October, November, December, and January uh, minutes.
Mr. Chairman, before you go any further.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask this. Tonight you have on your agenda the acceptance of August through January. Does that bring everything up to date?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe that's correct, Patty, is that? Don't let me make a bad statement to Mr. Higgins.
Nope, we're all caught up.
I will send you a uh, written communication in a few minutes withdrawing this complaint. Um, I'm not interested in getting a finding of an open meeting law violation. I was more interested in getting these minutes accepted. So I will be withdrawing that complaint formally and no response will be needed. I will send a uh, email to the chairman and Patty, and I'll send a copy to the Open Meeting Law Division of Open Government advising them that the Open Meeting Law complaint was issued and that I have withdrawn it and no, no responses needed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Patty, for getting them all done.
You guys do, y'all do a good job getting this stuff done and you guys don't violate the open meeting law too often, but I mean, you know, we're talking August, so. Sometimes I have to hold people's feet to the fire, but we got it done. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So while we're there, I hear.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, I just spoke with Dan.
Yep.
And uh, he's, he's blacked out. He's lost his power and he's got a flashlight, I guess, trying to type in the phone number to call the, to call in. And he, he said if he, he's not able to do it in a couple of minutes, he'd, he'd ask you to table the matter till he, till next time, but he's give him a couple more minutes to try this, I guess.
I'll give him a couple more minutes. I mean, if I can text him and ask him what the, what the response is to Joe's question. He's, he must have it memorized, whether it's ten or twelve feet, the north uh, side yard.
I'm sure he does have it memorized.
Well, give him another minute and I will withdraw my question.
No, no, it's an important, no, no, Joe, it's an important question.
No, I, I agree. I mean, we're taking a driveway that's been on the south side of the property and suddenly, you know, now the entrance is on the north side of the property. I'm a little bit confused. I mean, where is it? And, and how is it going to affect the person at, at one twenty-three?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to close out the open meeting one, uh, can I move to table the issue pending receipt of formal notification from?
We can do it in two parts. Yes, you can. So make that motion.
Okay, I move that we table the uh, open meeting law violations and uh, subject to.
Then to get up to Corporation Counsel and.
Subject to receipt of formal communication or withdrawal from uh, Mr. Higgins.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Lamarrasette. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Lamarrasette?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the August, September, October, November, December, and January uh, meeting minutes?
I make that. Wave, well, go ahead, Carolyn.
We'll do it, do it. We'll waive the reading and the next one will be to accept them.
Yes. I make that motion, yes.
Motion, Carolyn, yes. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Corkins, yes. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Carolyn Lamarrasette?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Can I get a motion to accept, to accept the minutes from August, September, October, November, December of two thousand twenty and January of two thousand twenty-one?
Motion to accept.
Carolyn Lamarrasette, motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Joe Pereira. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Lamarrasette?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, so that takes care of that. Thank you. Let's see, Dan. Mr. Ferraro, you're being very patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if, if I may, Mr. Pereira, answer your question?
Okay, Mr. Ferraro, go ahead. Answer the question for Mr. Pereira.
Why not? My, my intent was to, to keep the existing driveway would be for the new house to be built. So that existing driveway that currently sits there would be the driveway for the new house.
That would be for parcel two. That's what Mr. Aggy I said.
Yes.
Now tell us about the existing where you live, one eleven between two and one twenty-three. Where, what's the side yard, if you know, from the north side of your house to the side yard? Is it ten, twelve feet?
Um, I, I believe it's probably at least that.
Now will you ask? Be a new driveway for one eleven.
I think Dan's on.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Dan. So, so Mr. Ferraro is explaining to us, Dan, that the existing driveway is going to be used by the new, uh, the proposed single family house and the driveway to the north uh, for one, one eleven is going to be shifted to the north.
That's correct. I, I think I was just laying that.
Joe Pereira's question was, did you know the dimensional side yard setback, what, what the distance was?
For.
To the north of one eleven.
Between one, one, one eleven and one twenty-three.
Well, we won't be parking on the side of the house. It will be in front of the house.
Okay.
So, so we're, we're not trying to squeeze a driveway in between if that's what you were thinking, Joe.
It, it.
It'll, it'll be.
It wa, it was. That, that's, that's what I, that's my understanding and I apologize if there was a misunderstanding. So are you going to change, are you going to change the curb cut in front of one eleven?
Yes.
So that the parking is parked in front of the house? Okay.
Yep, because what happens is you'll see that existing house is set back about twenty-five feet, which is the building setback. The parking space requirement is only eighteen, so we would be providing two off-street parking spaces in front of the house and they would walk up that sidewalk to the left-hand side to get in the house.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed. Thank you. And, and then in parcel two, uh, are, are, are you comfortable then with the ten foot wide? I- is that driveway going to come into the front as well or is it going to be?
Yeah.
Next to parcel?
Nope. Nope, that, that will be in front of the, the house that gets built on parcel two as well. We're, we're not trying to jam driveways in between these lot lines.
Okay, that was a big concern. Thank you, Dan.
Great. I can't see anything either. I'm, I'm literally sitting in the dark.
Yeah, I was going to say pay your power bill.
Yeah, I was going to ask for a GoFundMe for uh, Site Tech, but.
Yeah, I'm struggling. I'm struggling. So any help, any help I would appreciate.
I have no other questions here, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to interrupt, but could I have Patty's mail address? If I get this done.
P Aggy R.
At Full River Mass?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so we've got all that. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition?
Mr. Chairman, we've got uh, a petition with ten signatures on it.
I was going to read that in. Okay, you've got it. I've got, there was a, go ahead, you read it, Bill.
Do you want to get the uh, the names and addresses as you did on the other one?
I do. I mean, I've got them all. But you, you read it.
All right, so this is uh, we, the undersigned are in favor of the petition of Paul Ferraro as it pertains to his application to subdivide the property at one eleven Savoy Street into two lots, leaving the existing dwelling on one lot and creating a second buildable lot in order to build a single family dwelling. And we've got uh, one twenty-three Savoy Street. And ninety Savoy. Forty-five Savoy. Eighty-seven Savoy. Thirty-seven Savoy. Seventy-three Savoy. Fifty-seven Savoy. Uh, one fourteen Savoy. Twenty-nine Bodge. And uh, we've got a thirteen twelve Bedford Street. I think that covers it.
That's the petition that I, that we received in writing, signed by those people. That is.
Correct.
And that covers all the immediate surrounding properties.
That does, Jim.
Yep.
Okay. Um, members of the board, what do you want to do? Motion to grant, motion to deny?
I move with uh, approval to grant.
Okay. That's it. Simple motion to grant.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion? Okay. Joe, Carolyn, Ricky?
Second.
Okay, do we have them? I'll give another minute. Anybody want to think about it?
I think Ricky seconded.
Okay, do we get a motion to deny?
I think Ricky seconded.
Oh, he did?
He seconded, yeah.
Did you, Ricky? I didn't see you. Okay, so Jim Corkins made a motion, simple motion to grant, seconded by Ricky Sahadi. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none? Uh, all those in favor? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
No.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Lamarrasette?
No.
Chairman Assad, no. So I think this particular petition uh, is, I don't think, this petition is denied. Um, thank you. That's number.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. We did the open meeting law. Is there any citizen input that we need to deal with? Is anyone out there that would like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, that email has been sent.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Both your email, Patty's email, Mr. Ramby's email and the Division of Open Government, so no response will be required. And I'm sure, I'm sure tomorrow the Attorney General's Office will send out an email advising that the complaint has been dismissed.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, approval of the minutes we did. Is there any other business we need to deal with before we adjourn?
I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I just wanted to say, my name is, sorry about that. My name is John Sylvia. I just want to speak on the citizens input.
Okay, John.
Um, I, I just, um, it was great seeing this meeting. I haven't seen one in a while. Um, and um, you know, I, I think you guys are like our protectors here.
Can you, can you identify, John, I got your name and I'm thinking that maybe you wrote a letter to the board on something.
No, no, I, I, I just spoke a few minutes ago. Fifty-one Ada Street is my address.
All right, yes, yes. Okay, please, go ahead.
Yeah, yes. So I, I just, I haven't seen a meeting in a while. Um, and you know, I'm, I'm happy that uh, you folks are kind of looking at uh, at, at the rules. Basically, you know, what is the hardship for folks? Um, this last property, um, if you looked at the drawing, I, I didn't say anything because if the neighbors are for it, but it's trying to fit a lo, this house in between two houses. Um, so I, I, I just wanted to commend you guys basically because you're the folks that are, are protecting the citizens of Fall River and, and trying to abide by, you know, less cars parking on the street, less congestion. Um, and I, I just want to commend you on that. I, I'm really happy about what I saw today.
Thank you. That's high praise. Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Okay, hearing none. Are we ready to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn the zoning board of the meetings for Thursday, February eighteenth?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Carolyn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. The four of the zoning board of appeals for Thursday, February eighteenth is hereby closed. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Good morning.